Our first order of business to review a few minutes, there are no minutes to approve at this time. Next item of business is signing of bills, there are no bills to sign. Board member comments, Mr. Rowe?
No comments.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
I have no comments either. We'll go into our first meeting and hearing. This is for a new public meeting for landscape revisions, request for a de minimis change, location 579 Lake Street, Senior Housing. Is the applicant present?
If you don't see him, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend at the moment to reorder the agenda to move on to the common driveway layout, and then we can see if he comes in in the next five minutes.
Sounds like a reasonable expectation, we will move that down. Our next item of business is the common driveway layout alteration, request for de minimis change, Whitney Street Home Builders LLC, location 257 Main Street. Is that applicant present?
That's the same presenter.
That is the same presenter?
It's John Griner, thank.
Okay. Then I guess they'll go to the end of the night, we'll move on to our next meeting. All right. Our next meeting is a continued public hearing for, it's actually two hearings, we run simultaneously for Northbridge Partners LLC, for warehouse distribution and logistics camper master plan development special permit, and campus master plan development site plan approval, joint meeting with the Shrewsbury Development Corporation, location 384 to 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike. See the applicants are present, please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, my name is Todd Maury, Beal Associates. I also have Devin Howell from our office with us, Brian Moore from Northbridge Partners, and Rebecca, here from David Peterson, and she was in charge of all the traffic work that was going on today. We have very little to update you on. On Tuesday evening of this week, we were in front of your conservation commission, we received that order of conditions through them. With the standard conditions and two others added, one being that we flagged the limits of clearing, including an orange snow fence within 30 feet of all, and the second special condition on that was that we take a look at the condition of the 15-inch culvert that comes off of South Street, drains under the existing driveway parking lot, and if that's a poor condition, we replace that. So, we agreed to those, so that should be offset. We have a, after the last meeting, we've sent a couple of letters to Mr. Cahill, one had to do with both of the signs on South Street that would meet the South Street driveway and prohibit trucks from using that, and the other had to do with the configuration of the driveway out onto Route 20 promoting and restricting the turns there. So it promotes the right-hand turns out, right-hand turns in, restricts left-out. We also received comments back from the traffic peer reviewer. There were a lot of responses, in fact, there were all responses that said no further action required, I liked those letters, so we have that back. The only thing I really have teed up on these presentation slides that's new for this evening is just the sketches that were included in the letters to Mr. Cahill for the signs on South Street, as well as the driveway configuration out on Route 20. I have nothing new to present this evening. We have been working throughout the week with Mr. Cahill, our team, our attorneys, to work through some of the, some of the conditions, should we get to that point.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing that was missed was the fire chief requested a reevaluation of the emergency vehicle movements on site, which was returned to us by Todd, so we have that now, and the fire chief has given is okay.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone on the board that has any questions at this time? Mr. Rowe?
No comments from my side.
Mr. Jerry?
I have none.
Only question I have is, so Mass DOT is okay with the configuration on Route 20?
That's the configuration, we will be presenting them for the permit, so.
Very good, I just wanted to make sure that they're all.
And as you're aware, Mr. Truman has requested to be present at all of our meetings with Mass DOT throughout that permit process, so we'll make sure he's with us on all of this.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. David Yadi, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I apologize. Okay, this is a public hearing, open public questions I would just like to offer, you know, we've had several meetings over this time, and we brought a lot of topics up that the board has been very mindful of. Those topics include traffic, noise, and lighting, so if there, and we've taken that all into consideration. If there's any other new items, other than things that we've discussed in the past, I'd be open to listening to what those may be. With that being said, Mr. Singer?
Yeah. David Singer, 400 South Street, and I did prepare a statement today, emailed Mr. Cahill to be sure that we cover all things new as we kind of wrap things up here, how I spent my summer vacation at these meetings. I had sent Bernie a couple of pictures before I get started, we've talked about 25-year storm systems, drainage systems, things like that, it was talked about the other day, I didn't necessarily think was that important, but as the rains came in today, the amount of kind of drainage and sediment and flooding that comes up onto South Street, it's really, considering how wet that area is, it really gets exasperated when you have such a little bit of rain like this, and I said in the meeting on Tuesday night, we don't need a 25-year storm to have issues up there that textbook calculations and national averages don't really account for. So, today actually happened to be kind of like a 25-day storm, and it's a good thing we have a couple of days before Henri gets here, so the kind of the note that I wanted to make today was that today's rains show even the best laid plans can be gone awry, the constant flooding at Route 20 and Route 9, Route 20 and 122, despite new drainage and I imagine 25-year storm plans. Mother Nature continues to do what she does, and I think that's going to be the case up here in the very wet lands. That being said, we have been in front of this board and on Zoom meetings many times to get to here as the planning board readies to render a decision. Since the initial presentation by Northbridge and Beal Associates, while making the minor adjustments to appease the peer reviewer in this board, they have never been able to answer the bigger questions related to the multiple and seemingly unsolvable traffic and safety issues, secure any actual tenants, hours operation, and so on, and they still don't. In fact, as these meetings have gone on, it seems more unanswered questions have been raised than have been solved. Like the traffic survey that did not address where the real trouble spots are on Route 20, not at the traffic lights, or trucks trying to turn right from Route 9 East onto South Street in impossible task. The Chestnut Street and South Street intersections were never reviewed, or even in winter, how South Street really turns into an ice rink as it approaches Route 20 on that slope, if anybody's ever tried to stop there in winter. It's pretty brutal. While the right-turn-only restriction on Route 20 alleviated, but did not eliminate a major concern for that one spot, it opened up a whole new can of worms to multiple roads around it as trucks and traffic try to get to and from the site. And despite Mr. Maury's excitement the other meeting about modern-day logistics, he learned in an office somewhere, I was able to rebut that from my real-life experiences, and anyone who is actually involved in shipping and receiving knows this is not the reality of the person driving the truck. We've talked about the monstrous size of these buildings and such a vast and fragile environment, they don't fit.
Mr. Singer, I hate to interrupt you, but I really am looking for a new.
I'm definitely moving along, yes, it all kind of pertinent to new stuff.
Thank you.
This is the last meeting, there's nobody behind us. And of course, the big gorilla being no actual tenants or end use, it remains a major concern for multiple reasons. Northbridge and Beal, from the beginning of negotiations, many, many months ago, up to and through these meetings, has had certainly more than enough time to land even one meaningful tenant. Any wise businessperson would presume after all this time, this is a product that has no market. But not just the Northbridge-Beal team. For almost 20 years, the town of Shrewsbury and the Shrewsbury Development Corporation, through multiple marketing campaigns and brokers, have also tried and failed. Why? Because the Allen Farm, with its abundant and always-growing extremely wet ecosystem, slopes, and other barriers, is simply not made for development. When the Allens settled here in 1725, it sure wasn't the great school systems we now have that attracted them, there was none, we weren't even a town. Also not in existence then were geological surveys, they mostly likely dug in, tasted the soil, and as folks did back then, decided correctly this was the place to settle. 275 years later, when the town bought the land from the Allens, thanks to a rare zoning loophole in the state's Chapter 40B law, and a rush to get a debt exclusion vote to the table, a land survey had not been done yet, and I'm pretty sure no one else had tasted the soil either. Absolutely nobody knew, at the time they put a must-build mandate on the land as a sort of promise to pay, how difficult to impossible it would be to develop. Left alone for almost 30 years, since the cows stopped grazing and the Allens stopped farming, it has gone from bad to worse for development. Edgemere crossings, this is not. That stayed the same old ugly eyesore for two decades, screaming to be developed, and they probably had less earth movement than this is going to have in a day. Meanwhile, the Allen Farm has blossomed into a unique tucked-away local treasure screaming to be left alone to the people of Shrewsbury, not just the barn.
All right, Mr. Singer, can I ask you to please?
Yep, we're almost done here.
Thank you.
With the recently passed CPA, the people of Shrewsbury have really updated their mandate from must build to must preserve. And at this time, after all these years, the pandemic has accelerated, this seems a much better return on investment than this monstrous proposition with no tenants and no guarantees. Before concluding, and I am, I promise, I'm almost done, to repeat a comment I made Tuesday that is every bit as relevant tonight, we've all agreed that this proposal seems to have less of an overall destructive footprint than the Bowler Plan. On close review, on top of all we've discussed about these meetings, with the amount of land to remove and the potential risk, it's really like feeling better that in place of nuclear weapons, the Nordstrom Plan will use conventional weapons instead to achieve the same results. So regardless of the pressure after 20 years to get a deal done, especially a really bad one that's on multiple levels like this, it seems illogical, this board can simply ignore all the concerns that have no answers, or ignore all the negatives that outweigh the positives, or ignore all the comments and counterpoints by the public and go ahead and approve this plan. Finally, if this was a court of law, and not a so-to-speak court of bylaws, and to deny this project was equal to a guilty verdict, there has certainly been more than enough evidence presented to this board to find this proposal guilty, and therefore, this proposal must be denied. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Good evening, board members. Maris DiPaolo, 18 Willard Ave, a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm here this evening tonight to represent the board. I believe you all had a chance to read the letter that we sent to you expressing our support, so I'm not going to read it. I would just like to say a couple of things, we are not under a mandate to develop that site to pay for the, to pay for the bond. We want to develop that site, and I'll get into that in a second, but the Board of Selectmen fully supports this project before you this evening. We had expressed our support early on by transferring ownership of the land from the town of Shrewsbury to the Shrewsbury Development Corp. after reviewing the proposal as it was presented to us in November of 2020, and we believe this proposal is substantially the same. That might not seem like a big deal, transferring the land, but when we bought this land and established the Shrewsbury Development Corp., and the mechanism of how this land was going to be disposed of, a land disposition agreement, the Board of Selectmen at the time, and I was on the board, so I know this for a fact, insisted that the board knew substantially, generally, what was going to be done with that site before we transferred the land to the Shrewsbury Development Corp. So, that is a big step in itself, because we have had a couple of meetings over the years on projects that are not public, because they were confidential, they never came forward, where we jointly agreed after discussion that they weren't right. So, anyways, I can tell you that being on the board when this land was purchased, and on a board that advocated for the purchase of this land, this land was always proposed to be developed. The concept of buying this land was to preserve it as a piece of commercial industrial property, because we have limited amounts of that in town, as you all know, with only 15% of the town zoned commercial residential, saving every piece that we can is important. So, it was promoted for development, it wasn't promoted for open space, it wasn't promoted for conservation. Town meeting members and the town board is overwhelmingly supported buying it under those conditions. So, the, as you know, up to this point, and it has been a long time that we've been trying to get to a point of having this land developed, the town has spent a significant amount of time and resources on this project, preparing for development on this site, the extension of water, the extension of sewer, a master plan, going through the MEPA process, there's a lot of effort that's gone into this. So the board encourages the planning board to allow the applicant to proceed with this project, but also to proceed with this project in allowing the operation to go 24/7, as other logistics operators do in Shrewsbury now. The logistics operations by their nature, trucking terminals, operate 24 hours a day. To limit this project to not be able to operate on a full 24-hour cycle, if they deem it important, is going to place this proposal at an economic disadvantage, a competitive disadvantage, and more than likely will result in this not happening. Some people may think that's a good thing, Board of Selectmen happen to think it's not. So, we do believe that the planning board and the developers have been sensitive to the issues that were raised by the neighbors. Now, all of them obviously haven't been done to the satisfaction of people, but I know from watching the meetings that there has been an effort to mitigate the impacts of this property on the abutters. So we fully support the planning board requiring additional or reasonable noise dampening measures to complement a no-disturb zone. As you know, that no-disturb zone was put in shortly after we bought that property and started talking about how it was going to be developed. The 250, 200-foot no-build, no-touch zone on that property, especially against the Thomas Farm Circle development, which is unique to any other commercial development that we have had in town. So we've made the effort even back then to make sure that the neighbors could be protected. Just give me one second here. The project obviously will provide a much-needed boost to our tax base, it'll also allow us to retire the debt on the loan. We can pay the loan, that's not the point, the point, the point of paying the loan off is, that was what was going to happen if the land was developed. So we're not under any pressure to do that, it's already included in the tax rate, it's not part of the operating budget, it was part of a debt exclusion. So, we encourage you, after listening to all of what you've heard, and we know you've heard a lot, put a lot of time in evidence this yourselves, that you approve this with any reasonable conditions that you think are necessary to both protect the neighbors and to be, and make, or make it possible for the developers to have a profitable and successful development. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? You had your hand up? Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Bradley, 20 Thomas Farm Circle.
Ma'am, can you speak up just a little bit more, you might, you can pull your mask down if it make it easier for you to speak. No, if you're okay, then just speak a little louder, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just responding to the leaflet that I got in the mail today, so I apologize if some of the things have already been hashed out, but anyway, my concern is the blasting of the bedrock that was brought up and the potential damage to the possibility of our foundations and whatnot.
So, can I answer that for you before you go any further?
Okay.
So blasting is not in the purview of the planning board, that is in the purview of the fire department.
Okay.
So, any concerns you have relative to that, that would deal, go through the fire department, they have all the measures of the process for that.
So it's been discussed and resolved?
Has it been discussed and resolved? Any questions you have relative to that, you would need to bring to the fire department themselves.
Okay. And the hours, I know they said that they wanted to be 24/7, and again, also, when you're talking about Amazon and Northborough doesn't want it, and being the fact that I'm actually at home 24/7 now, living there for 25 years in Thomas Farm Circle, I believe that it's too noisy, it will be chaotic, just having like the noise level, and just having the tractors and tractors, what are they called, tractor trailers, even, someone said 100, somebody else said 67 additionally a day. I've tried to pull out on Deterre Street, you can get, you can't get through the light without almost getting T-boned, or even if you're on Centec Drive, coming the other way to cross the street to get into my home, and if I wanted to go in an alternate route, I'd have to go down a winding cherry street, down to Route 9, and then up a hill, merge with traffic, especially fun in the wintertime, or Gold Street, down, so I mean, it's, please don't do this. What was my last comment was, it's just that please listen to the people that have lived in the neighborhoods, and I really think that the town is overbuilding industrial parks, especially too close to neighborhoods like my own. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir. Or ma'am, I'm sorry.
Donna Kishura, 29 Thomas Farm. Just going back where you say the blasting impact is, if we have questions, we have to talk to the fire department, but you as a committee here are going to approve or not approve this project, how can you not be fully informed of the impacts of things like that if you're not talking to that half of the group? I'm just, I don't know how you make a full-fledged decision.
So the fire department is responsible for providing the permits for the blasting, and they have a process to go through that analyzes all of that, I believe there's some investigation that has to happen on people's properties, pre and post blasting and all of that, again, I'm not the expert on that, the fire department is. So, so, excuse me, so the planning board deals with the site development, yes, there is some things that are moving around, but the permitting for the blasting and so forth is a specialized thing that the fire department takes care of themselves.
So if, just as an example, you could sit here and say, yes, we approve this project, then the fire department comes and goes, wow, now this is going to cause, you know, 30 houses on Thomas Farm to crack and fall down, you would then reject this project?
Well, the fire department would then not issue a permit for the blasting.
Okay. I just think it's odd that you don't have all the pieces when making your decision to approve a project. I.
We're under the premise that the blasting required, they've done an investigation that it will not impact the areas surrounding them, but again, the fire department will make the final determination on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Robert Miller, 47 Thomas Farm Circle. To dovetail on these two young ladies I've just said, I've been a developer, I'm no longer a developer, I've retired from that line of work, and I do know what blasting and what impacts it does on foundations. So my question is the same as their question, how as a board are you going to approve a project that you as a board cannot reassure us that you have the answers to the questions that we're asking, you're deferring it to the fire department, that's okay for you to say that, but as a board that is making a decision on a complete project, you as a board should have already had those answers, that way when we ask you that question, you can say, we have addressed that situation, these are the results and the findings of the fire department, rest assured residents, that these have been covered and you are having issue that is not an issue. Well, you can't say that, you're telling me that you don't have definitive answers, you're also saying that we should refer to the fire department. How can you approve a project? And I have no problems with developing, because like I said, I was a developer myself, and I know the pains of what developers go through to get things approved, but when it comes to, one, my own neighborhood, and two, when it comes to having answers before approvals that are not there that you can readily give, I have a very serious concern with where your position is compared to where the overall benefit and good, or not good, of the people in your community, that you are the board, that we expect you to protect us, and when you don't have the answers. I have very, very strong concerns for that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, please.
So the planning board is not, and does not have any expertise on blasting, that's the first thing I would say.
I didn't say you did.
I know. We have approved, or this board I should say, has approved many projects in the past, and has not regulated how excavation is done on the site. Edgemere is a great example, actually, they did do some blasting, and that permit was pulled after the approval of this board.
Your point being?
My point being is that's the order it works in, so this board approves, if the fire department denies, then the project stops. Doesn't go forward at that point.
Right. Okay.
So who should you contact in the fire department? Who's going to give it?
I would say the fire chief.
Fire chief, yep.
I would contact the fire chief, and then he can direct you to wherever his process goes from there.
I'll get your answers, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mark Carlson, 29 Thomas Farm Circle. I've been coming to these meetings for three years now to discuss development of that property, and I'm not against development, I've gotten letters from you saying that this development was slated for office space and light industry, and that is not what this is. This is a, now we're hearing a possible 24/7 freight business, and it's crazy, it doesn't belong in that neighborhood, so I'm asking you to. So I'm asking you to deny the application or do not approve this, is my request. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Yes, Mr. Singer, please keep it brief.
Yeah, just to rebut a little bit and to augment what the gentleman just said, the original Allen Farm master plan looked nothing like what this plan looks like today. Just everything has kind of been amended from zoning to the campus corporate environment to try and make a sale over the last 20 years, and nothing's been done, and it kind of relates back to what I had talked about in my statement. The board of selectmen, everybody that's involved with this might be happy, but like just as the gentleman said, and I've pointed out here, at this point in time, it's just not the best thing for the town of Shrewsbury as a whole and the people of Shrewsbury as attitudes change and desires for open space comes in. Yes, in that debt exclusion vote, it was an overwhelming vote. I pointed this out a couple of years ago, I didn't bring the numbers with me to tonight, it was like 1,300 and whatever to 199, the most lopsided vote in history because nobody knew what they were voting on. Dan Morgado, the town manager at the time, the selectmen, everybody got on board, we made a proposal to the town and said, this debt exclusion will cost you less than Avalon moving into there with all the new infrastructure that we put in at that time. Ms. Deana Nichols, who sits on this board, said to me in the hallway in a meeting about two years ago when we gathered last, even she was confused at the time of the vote as to what she was really voting for. Nobody knew what they were voting on. If you look at the numbers, there's been no vote in history that's been as lopsided as that debt exclusion vote was unless it was either fixed or people simply didn't know what they were voting on, and in this case, they simply didn't know what they were voting on, they just thought they were saving money. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might again.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No worries.
So the other gentleman before Mr. Singer's comment about not being aware that warehousing and distribution was allowed, the flexible overlay was adopted in 2009 and specifically allowed for warehousing and distribution.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
By town meeting, not by the board.
I got another, like, three months ago saying that this project needed special approval to get past that, so.
Allowed by special permit, yes.
Allowed by special permit, which is the process they're going under. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions of the applicant?
I have no comments from my side.
Mr. Jerry.
Do you have one other question? Yeah. I just asked, Mr. Chairman, listen to this before, just now, is it my understanding one way or the other that there is a no build coming through Thomas Farm, or is there going to be build that the traffic is going to pass through Thomas Farm Circle? We're unclear on that.
Okay. Would you please explain where the traffic flow will be going through relative to Thomas Farms?
Right now it's a closed circle.
Yeah, so there's not any intent to have a connection over to Thomas Farm at all. So there are two main access points in and out of the site. One is on Route 20 itself, which would be a right-in and right-out only driveway, and then the other access point is on South Street, a little bit north of the Cherry Street intersection.
And I believe the 200-foot buffer is adjacent to the Thomas Hill property, correct?
Correct.
So from the end of the property line of Thomas Hill, 200 feet, no build buffer, and then the construction going towards South Street.
So I'm sure that I understand you clearly. If I'm coming down Cherry Street from Route 20 to Route 9, I turn a right on Thomas Farm, which is a loop, there is no traffic going to the development?
No.
It will stay the way it is?
You're correct.
And there is a buffer between there?
200-foot buffer of the no build.
And there is no zoning exclusion that is prepared for?
There is no zoning exclusion currently before us.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I'm just going to keep interjecting. If it's any comfort, the Conservation Commission has requested not just flagging of the no-build zone, but actually a fence be put in to prevent any accidental removal of brush or trees within that 200-foot buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that actually happened Tuesday, I believe.
Which is not something they always conditioned, but they did for this.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else on the board have questions of the applicant? I have none either. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Both have, both hearings.
Do we need two motions?
Yes.
Two motions, yeah.
I would move that we close the public hearing for the Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan Development Special Permit, North Bridge Partners LLC, location 384-386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike.
Do I have a second?
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye. But also move that we close the public hearing for the Warehouse Distribution Logistics Campus Plan Master Development Site Plan Approval, North Bridge Partners LLC, location 384 to 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike.
Do I have a second?
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we do have some materials in front of us, based on all of the conversations we've had throughout the process, and I'd like to start with the special permit decision.
Mr. Chairman, the appellant, you may take a seat if you want, or you can stay there.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed, there will be no more conversations by the public or the applicant at this point. Thank you. Under the decision, there are some conditions that I'd like to discuss amongst the board, see if they have any questions. So other than the traditional special conditions on decisions, there is one in here I'd like to cover, number four, which is all clear cutting shall be in accordance with Section 7 S of the zoning bylaw. Number six, commercial truck traffic shall be prohibited from accessing the entrance and exit on South Street. Any questions or comments relative to those two yet?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, which one number are you on? Sorry.
That was number six, under the decision.
Special permit decision.
On the special permit.
Six. Did you go through one through five?
No, if you'd like, I can go through all of them. Okay, it'd probably be easier. There's quite a few, so we've got a few moments, might as well do this. So under decision, the first one is the special permit shall be recorded and registered through the registry of deeds after the conclusion of the 20-day appeal period. The applicant shall list registry of deeds reference information for approved special permits on the cover sheet of the final plans. Prior to the required pre-construction conference and to the issuance of any building permits, final plans shall be submitted for approval by the town planner and town engineer that address the issues or plan modifications as raised by Graves Engineering in a letter to the planning board dated July 29, 2021. I mentioned the clear cutting shall be in accordance with Section 7.S of the zoning bylaw. The location of electric, excuse me, a location of electric vehicle ready parking spaces shall be shown and labeled on the final plans. The electric vehicle charging stations shall be contracted and rendered operational within 18 months of occupancy of Building A or Building B, where the applicant shall return to the planning board prior to the end of the 18-month time period in order to establish a date certain for full operation. Commercial truck traffic shall be prohibited from accessing the entrance and exit on South Street. Trash removal from dumpsters and trash compactor operations shall only be between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and between the hours of 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM on Sunday and Saturday. Signs shall be affixed to all dumpsters and compactors stating the allowed days and times for removal and operation. All truck loading doors shall remain closed when not in operation between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
Would you like me to summarize number nine?
Yeah, could you do that, please? Because number nine is a couple of...
Yeah, so why don't we stop there and just ask the other, recommend you ask the other board members, do they have any comments on those first eight?
Any questions or comments relative to items that we've brought up thus far?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Yeah, I just want to remind you, you are totally welcome as the board, completely welcome to offer amendments or suggestions to any of these conditions, as you see fit. So number nine is dealing with noise, pretty much that after the first six months of occupancy, that the applicant will go to the zoning enforcement officer, which is the building inspector in our town, as it is in most towns, if not all of them, and collect any complaints that she's received within those six months and bring them to this board for your attention after six months. If at the end of six months, you deem, this board deems, that it has exceeded what was expected for noise levels, at that point, we have here that the, if the planning board finds that the evidence provided by the town of Shrewsbury zoning enforcement officer/building inspector demonstrates that the site has created noise above and beyond the representations made during these public hearings, the applicant shall undertake the following mitigation measures. One of them is installation of a 15-foot-tall sound wall, sound barrier wall, along the southwestern corner of Building A, which we discussed earlier, and installation of additional dense evergreen plantings immediately adjacent to the easterly edge of the loading area of Building B. So those cover the two buildings, B and A. So the idea is that there is a trigger, but also, and there's one other thing, that if the zoning enforcement officer feels that she's unable to assess the noise increase, that a third-party specialist in noise can do a noise verification at the property line. It's not a capacity that, capability that we have in the building department, we don't have the material, we don't have the equipment for it, let's put it that way. So that's number nine. Does anyone have any?
Any questions relative to number nine? Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm just curious if we don't know, if we don't know the level of noise that could be created by this property, how we would know that these mitigation measures would be sufficient, and what if they're not deemed to be sufficient?
Right. So nothing in this condition stops you from bringing them back for more, right? If, so in other words, if you're saying if they put these mitigation...
My concern would be if the noise is excessive and the sound barrier fails to mitigate that to a level that is satisfactory
Right.
...to the town, to the zoning enforcement officer, how we would...
Yeah, so noise complaints typically go through the building inspector anyway.
Right.
So regardless of whether it's in any kind of agreement, and they'd be brought to our attention as well, and you could always call the applicant back here to do more. We could put in some kind of language about, I don't think, I wish I understood the following mitigation measures.
I'm not suggesting that this would be the case, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, and noise is, myself not being a noise specialist, but understanding that this is a very salient issue for people, a very important, I'm happy to entertain if you want to amend something or add something, the board, something to the effect of if the mitigation measures are not sufficient, the board shall, I don't know how you'd make that determination, though, either. DEP was called in for Charles River Labs, and I know that they have certain sound requirements that people need to meet, and they work with them to bring that sound level down. So I know in Charles River Labs, they've done that.
Okay. Do you want to modify the language at all, or do you think this will be, I don't think, to Mr. Cahill's point, I don't think it limits us from having them come back if additional noise mitigation measures are required.
No, I think this is written very thoughtfully, I just wanted to make sure that we still retain that ability, should it not be satisfactory.
And if you want an affirmative statement in that we can, like, we could put something that says, if these are not deemed sufficient, the board reserves the right to call the applicant back to a public meeting.
I would think that that would be a prudent thing to put in, given the fact that this has been a large issue for
Yeah, certainly.
...the people who've spoken from the public.
Yep.
Okay. Admend that. Okay. Would you like me to pick up on any other questions on number nine before we move on? Okay. Number 10, the planning board shall be copied on all direct access permit application submittals made by the applicant to Mass DOT and shall receive a copy of any issued permits from Mass DOT. 11, a summary of all traffic mitigation measures as required by the state as part of the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, the MIPA process, shall be provided in writing to the planning board and DPW. Number 12, final plan shall include the reconfiguration of the driveway onto Route 20 to provide geometric controls in addition to regulatory signage that would prohibit left turns into or out of the property as described and shown in a letter to Bernard Cahill, town planner from Todd Mori Beals Associates, Incorporated, regarding Hartford Turnpike entrance and exit configuration dated August 11, 2021. Any questions about things that we've covered thus far? Okay. Number 13, final plan shall include signage restricting access at the South Street entrance to passenger vehicles only, as described and shown in a letter to Bernard Cahill, town planner, from Todd Mori Beals Associates, Incorporated, regarding South Street signs dated August 11, 2021. Number 14, final plan shall designate all parking spaces above the required minimum as reserved. The applicant shall have the right to build out any reserved parking spaces based upon the parking needs or zoning requirements of any future tenants. Until such time as any unused reserved parking spaces are built out, said reserved parking spaces shall remain green and open space. Number 15, a transportation demand management, TDM, plan shall be submitted to the planning board by the tenants of Building A and B prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. 16 is a rather long one. Do you have a condensed version for 16, or you just want me to read you through it?
Do you mind if we pause for a second?
Sure.
Another member of staff would like to make a comment.
Sure.
Thank you. Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, oversee the Planning and Economic Development Department. Just like to offer a suggestion for the noise condition. Perhaps if we require Northbridge to create a baseline noise study, once they construct the building but do not commence operations, we'd be at a better sense of if there is a noise complaint, we can understand if it's above or below that baseline at a certain point in time. So just for your consideration as staff.
Okay. Thank you, Miss Lass. Is that, well, before we move on, is that something that we deem would be part of the amendment?
I think that...
I think that's a very thoughtful suggestion. I'd be in favor of that.
How do we want to word that? Maybe Bernie can go through the...
I think exactly as Miss Lass mentioned it. So onsite noise shall be muffled to the maximum extent practicable, this is back on condition So the applicant shall...
Perform baseline noise level?
Yeah, shall perform baseline noise level monitoring.
At the property lines?
At the property lines of the project.
Upon completion of construction?
Upon, you know, completion of construction, but prior to the beginning of operations.
Yeah.
Prior to occupancy or the beginning of operation?
Operation, I believe.
To the start, beginning of operations. Okay, so then this flows pretty well. The applicant shall return to the planning board for a public meeting six months after a certain kind of occupancy has been issued for Building A and Building B. With new test data, right? That's what we want? We're trying to do it before and after.
Yes.
Okay. Has been issued, applicant shall, all right, hold on. Sorry, I'm doing this on the fly. The applicant shall perform a base noise level monitoring at the property lines of the project upon completion of construction or prior to the beginning of operations. We'll just make it one big sentence, and again, six months, right, six months after a certificate of occupancy has been issued for Building A and B. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment on number 11, which is the MIPA process.
Yep.
Basically, MIPA issues a decision, and as part of these mega projects or major projects, they also issue what is called a Section 61 finding, which requires them... them to implement all the measures that were part of MIPA process. Invariably, they end up implementing that, but it's probably a good idea in this to say that the applicant shall implement Section 61 findings as required by MIPA.
Does MIPA typically have noise requirements?
No, that's not relating to
Not related to noise.
But, but it can, it can. Traffic, noise, everything. It can issue, and the applicants are very aware of that, you know. As part of the EIR, MIPA issues those, and now it's a project change, so those still will be applicable. But it's just reiterating, they, they have to implement those anyway, but I think it's, it's probably a good idea to include language to that effect, if at all possible.
Is that a, is it something they do every time?
When, when the project goes through environmental impact report review process, yeah.
So I just don't want to put something in there that
No.
may or may not
Yeah.
come out as a
Yeah.
possible problem.
Uh, yeah. And I don't know if applicant can, no, they can speak, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, all right, there was a, just a clarification, point of clarification, I think someone in the audience misunderstood. The truck restriction is for entrance and exit on South Street.
Yes.
Not the traversing of South Street, as proposed and offered by the applicant. So not a restriction of trucks, per se, on South Street, but the entrance and exit, as Mr. Mori had stated earlier.
Yes.
All right, I think I got the, before we go on to MIPA, let me just make sure we got this right. And again, six months after, as mentioned, the applicant shall return to the planning board for a public meeting six months after a certain occupancy has been issued to present the findings of the two's noise, of the two noise monitoring studies for Building A and Building B, and then it goes on from there.
Yep, okay. Is everything, okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am, do you want me to, Tim, do you want me to leave that last comment in that we made about if the sound mitigation measures are deemed insufficient, or if, do you want another sound monitoring thing after the mitigation has been put in? So if, if mitigation is required, the applicant shall conduct a post-mitigation monitoring to determine if it's had an impact? Because that's what, it seems like you're looking for.
Essentially, the point I'm getting at is I would just want to make sure that if the noise is at a level that is not acceptable, that the measures that are put in place work to mitigate that issue. So I think requiring, if the mitigation is required...
If mitigation is required to be installed, the applicant shall conduct an additional noise monitoring study at the property lines. And present the results to the planning board for their review. If the sound mitigation measures are deemed insufficient to address the noise created by operation at the project site by the planning board or the zoning enforcement officer, we'll just put planning board. The board reserves the right to require additional sound mitigation measures in a public meeting with the applicant.
Very good.
Is that true?
Perfect. Perfect.
All right, so moving on.
Thank you.
Number 11.
All right, so MIPA, so, Perna, you had something you wanted to add to number 11?
Yeah, I'll read, I'll read it out and let's see if that is appropriate. The applicant shall implement Section 61 findings issued as part of the MIPA process. They, they do it anyways, but we are just reiterating, I don't know.
Okay, I got to, the applicant shall...
Yeah, the applicant shall...
I'm not a sonographer.
Yeah, no, the applicant shall implement...
Shall implement, as much as I think I am.
Section 61 findings.
61 findings.
Issued as part of the MIPA process.
All right, number 12.
12 was okay.
I think number 12 was actually presented tonight, we actually have that now. That was the reconfiguration of the driveway that you requested, Steve, for onto Route 20. So we do have that. I don't know if we need to keep it in there, but if you want to, just...
That's not going to hurt to be...
Number 13, final plan shall include signage restricting access at the South Street entrance to passenger vehicles only, as described and shown in a letter to myself, from Mr. Mori, regarding South Street signs dated August 11th, 2021.
Yep.
So that's for the signage. You read the reserve one?
Yep, I've read the transportation demand management.
Yep.
I'm on 16 now. I don't know if you want me to just read it, or if you've got it abbreviated?
I can probably do an abbreviation of this. So this is similar to having a, for the Market Basket, the Edgeman Project. So this is pretty standard, there's a six, this is for traffic, increase in traffic. There's a six and a 12-month monitoring that occurs if it exceeds what was projected. So if actual traffic generation for the development is 110% more than projected, right, or if the distribution of trips as compared to the information contained in the GPI traffic report is significantly different than projected by more than 10%, the applicant shall work with MassDOT and the town of Shrewsbury to implement appropriate corrective measures within the dominion and control of the applicant. And then there's just some timing language in there about if A, then not B, when both go in. Same thing we did for the noise, there'd be an initial monitoring of noise, actually, no, it's actually a little different. There'd be an initial monitoring of traffic, excuse me, but we wouldn't want the next one until the next building's occupied, so we have a complete picture, the board and the town have a complete picture of the impact.
Yep.
Otherwise, you know, we're only getting half of the impact, so they'd have to come back for that. And then also, we have one other thing, which is if that 12-month monitor, so in addition to those mitigation, working with the town and DOT, if there is an increase shown at the 12-month period, they'd be required at the 24-month period to come back and show us if those mitigation measures by DOT and the town are working, so they'd show us, do a third one. So it's kind of a trigger.
Yep.
That summarizes that one. Did you, do any of you?
Anyone have any questions relative to that? Okay. The next item is number 17, traffic monitoring reports shall summarize the status of TMD programs to determine whether expansion or modification of the TD, TDM program is appropriate to achieve the stated goal of reducing vehicle trips, as documented in the applicant's submitted traffic study and subsequent related correspondence thereto, entitled Proposed Distribution Center 384-386 South Street, dated April 2021, prepared by Greenman Peterson, Incorporated, GPI, 181 Ballardville Street, Suite 202, Wilmington, Massachusetts, 01887. Number 18, in all circumstances, snow relocation from the main parking fields shall, shall take place as soon as practical following a storm event. If the limits of snow storage are exceeded, snow shall be removed from the site and properly disposed of by snow removal contractors. Building permit from the building inspector is required for any signs on the property. Number 20, an NPDES construction general permit coverage shall be applied for with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and proof of coverage and a copy of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan shall be submitted to the Engineering Division. Questions thus far? Now we're going to get into some more of the standard, but there is a couple in here that I like to bring forward anyways, but a lot of the rest are pretty standard. Proposed landscaping shall be Asian longhorn, longhorn beetle resistant only. Vegetation clearing shall be done by an Asian longhorn beetle certified contractor. 22, due to a strain in the public, in the town public, I'm sorry, and due to the strain in the town water supply, there shall be a ban on connecting lawn irrigation systems to the public water supply. 23, lighting and, lighting associated with the project shall be dark sky compliant and installed with fully shielded or full cutoff lighting fixtures to avoid elimination on adjoining properties in accordance with 7.F.3.C.5 of the zoning bylaw. 24, precautions shall be taken to prevent erosion of soil stockpiles on the site. 25, a temporary construction berm approved by the Engineering Division shall be installed prior to the issuance of any building permits for construction. 26, the project will be subject to inspection fee and bond as adopted by the planning board on September 7, 2017. 27, a pre-construction conference with DPW and the Planning Department shall be held prior to any construction. 28, final plan submittals shall be delivered to the Planning Department at least one week prior to the pre-construction conference. After final plans are approved, an original set of plans on mylar shall be provided to the Planning Department in addition to copies of the final plans in accordance with the planned distribution list, including scanned images of all planned sheets, and a non-returnable USB flash drive with the AutoCAD files for project shall be provided. 29, construction operations shall be limited to Monday through Saturday between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. There shall be no work on Sunday or holidays. No idling or operation of construction vehicles shall occur outside of these hours. Violation of working hour restrictions may lead to the delayed issuance of building or occupancy permits. A sign approved by the Engineering Division shall be posted at each construction entrance. 30, after construction is completed, an as-built plan approved by the Engineering Division and the Planning Department shall be provided for the project. Original as-built plans for the final project shall be printed on mylar and stamped by a professional land surveyor, and also included a certification, certification stamped by a professional engineer indicating the project was constructed in accordance with the approved plans. A non-returnable USB flash drive shall be, also be submitted with the scanned images of the as-built plan sheets and updated AutoCAD files for the project. Elevations on the as-built plan shall reference the town of Shrewsbury GIS datum. 31, the terms and conditions of this special permit shall remain in force throughout the life of the structures and site. If any one portion of this decision is found to be invalid, the remainder shall remain in force. And that is it for the decisions. Is there any questions or comments of anything that we discussed?
I have none.
Okay. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we execute the decision of the planning board regarding the application for special permits at 721 Hartford Turnpike, 384 to 386 South Street, North Bridge Partners, LLC, permit number SPA-12A-2021.
With amendments.
With the amendments as described by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call on the vote for this. So Mr. Eliade.
I'm in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rao.
In favor, Chairman.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Our next item is the decision for the site plan. The site plan is identical in terms of the findings on the decision, I don't believe there's anything
In terms of the conditions.
In terms of the conditions.
Yeah, I'm doing that now, so bought me some time reading all those. But I'll print them out so you can sign it after your vote. But the conditions are duplicate, so they're exact same.
Is there any questions or comment relative to the site plan as described?
No question, Chair.
Mr. Eliade cannot participate in this, unfortunately, but, Mr. Jerry, do you have?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we execute the decision of the planning board regarding the application for site plan approval for 721 Hartford Turnpike, 384 to 386 South Street, North Bridge Partners, LLC, permit number SPA-12B-2021, inclusive of the amendments as described in the prior amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rao.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Okay, move on to our next item of business, is, back to the beginning of the agenda.
I believe Mr. Grenier is here.
Oh, Mr. Grenier is here. Thank you.
Richard Ricker told you to do it on without me.
He did.
I thought I did. Two minutes.
Have a good evening.
Our joint meeting is over.
Your joint meeting is completed, yes.
Okay, I can even with them.
Mr. Grenier, you are here for landscape revisions, request for diminutism change, Shrewsbury Partners, LLC, it's a new public meeting for location 579 Lake Street Senior Housing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the project, John Grenier, James Grenier.
Can I interrupt you for one moment, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kristen, could you ask them to, please?
How did they learn?
Look how quick that was. Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Grenier.
The, the developer of the project is getting close to near completion, mostly within the main portion of the site. Under the original approved plans, there were sections on the, on the backside of units going between 1 and 15, and this section, there were areas where it was approved, where he had evergreens that were planted, to be planted in this area as well as in this area. Under the conditions right now, there are some rather large mature trees in this area, and evergreens that would be planted, they probably wouldn't thrive in those areas. And, and I believe this is also at the request of the abutters who live behind these units to have a six-foot-high white vinyl fence for a more permanent year-round screening. So in this section, behind units 15 and 11, we are proposing a six-foot-high white vinyl fence in this area, as well as in the area of units 1 and 3, again, to place a six-foot-high white vinyl fence in the area behind those units. In addition to that, there was no screening proposed in this area behind units 3 and 5, and he is proposing a four-foot-high white vinyl fence in, would be the backyards of units 3 and 5. So that's, that's the long and short of it, it's just really to provide adequate screening given the site conditions.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments relative to this diminutism change request?
Is the six-foot fence that you mentioned there, is that because of the abutters who are requesting it to be done that way, or?
I haven't been part of those conversations, but it's, it's my understanding. I also think, I understand one of the, the new residents has, has a hot tub in his backyard, so I, I think that was kind of a driving force in, in having some permanent screening as well.
Yeah, thank you.
John, can you speak to, or, sorry, Mr. Grenier, can you speak to, is, it appears that some of the screen has been removed behind some of the sites? Am I mistaken in my?
Um, there is a, yes, there is a swath behind number 5, 7, and 9, where it's, it's heavily wooded in the rear areas of those, and again, some of the, and the grade does go, rise in that area, so there's both a topographic and there's also quite a good area of existing vegetation that provide good screening. So, and with the tree cover and the high limbs, newly planted evergreens probably wouldn't really fill out as, as they could or, or potentially should. But there is natural buffer there as well.
Okay. Only question I have is relative to the white vinyl fence, whether it's on the exterior or the interior of the site, the long-term maintenance of that, is that covered under a prior, would that be covered under a prior?
So this is a condo association, so the condo association will be responsible for upkeep of all the landscaping, including fences.
Okay.
And there's a stone wall there, so it would be on, within the project inside of an existing stone wall.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or have any concerns of this being considered a de minimis change?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
No.
I don't know.
I do not.
So I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the request for de minimis change for landscaping revisions, Shrewsbury Partners LLC, located at 579 Lake Street Senior Housing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Griner, you are up again. Common driveway layout alteration. Request for de minimis change for Whitney Street Home Builders LLC. New public meeting, location 257 Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, John Griner, J. M. Griner Associates, on behalf of Whitney Street Home Builders. Again, this is a project that was approved by your board for three units at the rear portion of, of this site. There, if you'll recall, there was the original house located, number 257, located in this area. We have a proposed common driveway that gives access to these units at the rear portion of the site. Under the approved development plans, the common driveway comes from Main Street straight right up through the site and, and fairly close proximity to number 257. And it was requested from that new homeowner that we look to provide some additional buffer and separation to her home. So that entailed approaching National Grid because we would be going within their easement, not under the power lines, but within the, the limits of their easement. So we proactively approached National Grid, made sure that they have to give approval for that. There is a consent agreement that was provided by them. They approved it. We have a consent agreement so that we can shift, as shown in red, basically shift the, the location adjacent to number 257 to give a little bit more, more buffer there, which is to be good neighbors, it's to her benefit, and it's to everybody's benefit. Give everybody a little bit more room, a little more screening. So we, again, approached National Grid. We got approval from them. We have a consent agreement in order to do that work. And it doesn't alter the, the scope of the project. It just shifts the driveway over a little bit to give her a little bit more breathing room.
Any questions relative to this?
Yeah, approximately, how many feet is that driveway being shifted?
Originally, I, it was probably like 10, maybe 10 feet off of the corner of her foundation. Now it's going to be about 25, 26 feet. So it, it provides, you know, she, she could have opened up a, a drive-up window at, you know, originally. But now we've got some room to do some planting there, do some landscaping and, and give everybody a little bit extra room.
So is that whole ship going to be on the National Grid portion of it or?
Correct. And the reason originally we went straight up through was to not go within the National Grid's easement because it can, to be honest, it, it can be a headache, it can be. And they don't necessarily have to give you approval for that.
Yeah.
But once we got into the site and construction started, we said, and we had some discussions with that, with the new homeowner. And we said, yeah, let's, let's approach National Grid. Let's see what we can do for everybody's benefit. So we went through the process, took a, took a handful of months, especially with COVID, you know, trying to get ahold of people. But we, we plugged away through the process and, and they were accommodating. It all worked out well.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Could you just confirm for us that this change to the driveway doesn't have any negative impact on emergency vehicles or trash removal or plowing? It wouldn't appear to you from this, but-
No, it won't, it won't at all.
Road width is the same size.
The driveway width is the same size. There's no, it, it's more of a, of a gentle curve. There's no sharp turns, no, nothing that would affect, you know, trash vehicles or emergency vehicles, the ability to get into the site.
Thank you, good question. All right, I see this is falling under a de minimis change. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No objection from my side, objection.
Entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the request for de minimis change on the common driveway layout alteration for Whitney Street Home Builders LLC, located at 257 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Sorry you had to sit around for a little longer than you anticipated.
It's always interesting, trust me. Especially being on this side.
Yeah. All right, with that, that ends our agenda for the evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move that we adjourn the meeting of the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all and have a great evening.